Good morning. This meeting is now resumed. Members of the council, we will now review and confirm the order paper. There are 11 items left on the agenda, including five member motions. Members, I want to remind you that today's meeting must end by 5:00 p.m. in order to permit religious observance. I'm hoping that we will be finished by lunch. Members, I have reviewed an urgent motion without notice from the mayor to be added to the agenda. Mayor Torrey, if you can introduce your motion, please.
Yes, by way of, and I trust the motion will be shown on the screen momentarily, Speaker. Just by way of introductory comment while it comes up, pursuant to the efforts that we were being encouraged to make by councillor Layton and others the other day, with a lot of leadership from Deputy Mayor Bylaw, we have, and myself, we have received some very substantial sums of money from the federal government, but it has to be deployed and employed in providing for affordable and supportive housing right away in order to comply with their timelines, which is why it's called the Rapid Housing Initiative. And I think pretty well all members of council have been spoken to about this yesterday, and I apologize for the fact that it's being brought forward now, but we didn't want to take any chance whatsoever that, you know, we would not be able to have the latitude necessary to make all the applications we have to make to actually take advantage of this very substantial sum, $203 million of money that has to actually have people in housing in a 12-month period. I mean, that's a bit of an oversimplification, but not by much. So the motion, if you can put it back up, sorry, I just can't see it now. I just, I make sure I cover off what it covers, because it covers, I think, the timing of our discussion of this motion today as well. Can the clerks put that up for me? Just, oh, hang on. See, because my computer's gone dormant again, I'm looking at it on the iPad.
So it is, it is on the screen.
There we go. No, I see it now, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, can we, is it, is it, can we scroll, can we scroll it, Speaker, or is it just the motion?
No. Mr. Mayor, first of all, first of all, you have to introduce it, so we'll take a vote in.
I'll move, I see that here. So I move that it be permitted to be added to the agenda of the meeting as an urgent, urgent motion without notice.
Okay, thank you. On favor, show of hands, carried. And I understand that you want to make this the first item this morning? No? Oh, okay.
I don't think that, the intention, I think it was 11 o'clock, as I understand, Speaker.
Okay, 11 o'clock? Okay. Okay, thank you. On favor of 11 o'clock to deal with this motion, on favor, carried. I will now take the release.
Speaker, if I may, just at 11 o'clock, let's give people a chance to read it, and I think we circulated it before council this morning so people could read it, because it's not that long, but it's long enough to warrant a careful reading, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and councillor Bylaw, I understand you have a motion you want to introduce as well?
I don't. It's actually, can be a motion on an item, so that's fine.
Oh, okay, thank you. I will now take the release of member holes. Please put your name on the list. Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning. AU 6.7, review of 268 Street land transaction. I'd like to refer that back to Audit Committee.
AU 6.7, you're moving to refer it back to Audit Committee? On favor?
That's correct.
On favor, show of hands, carried. Thank you. Okay, let me get back to the list. Okay, councillor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I can quick-release a few items. I would like recorded votes on them. I think the first one is PH 17.9, Development Pipeline, 2020. I'd like to record a vote on that, as I'm not satisfied with it.
Okay, so on PH 17.9, recorded vote.
Members, we're opening the voting panel.
Speaker, through you, to the clerk, I can't get my, can't get in on my laptop here, so if you'll see me, if you ask me and I'll tell. Okay, Mayor Torrey, how do you vote, sir? A vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Councillor Cole and councillor Matlow, are you able to, are you able to vote online?
I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, councillor Matlow, in the affirmative. Councillor Cole, are you able to vote online? Councillor Cole, are you present?
All right. In the affirmative for councillor. In the affirmative for councillor Pasternak, I can't get online.
Thank you, councillor Pasternak. The item carries, 20 to 1.
Councillor Holliday.
Speaker, I'll try, I'll try one more. Yep, thank you, Speaker.
Yes.
As soon as the screen unfreezes here from the vote, I can read the item.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been this far before.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, just, if you bear with me here, because the, the system just takes a moment.
Okay.
The next item is MM 25.5, Creating a Chain Retail Store Strategy for Toronto. I can release that. I'd like to have a recorded vote on it, as again, I look forward to learning as this unfolds, but I'm not satisfied with the recommendations.
Okay, recorded vote on MM 25.5.
Members, the voting panel is being opened.
Councillor Pasternak, are you able to vote?
The item carries, Madam Speaker, the vote is 21 to 2.
Thank you. And councillor Holliday?
Madam Speaker, I'll try one more.
Councillor Holliday, the, would you like to release MM 2531 as well?
If that is the, is the number, yes. MM 25.31, Urging Continued Federal Government Action on Gun Violence. If you recall, I wanted to vote separately on item number three to be recorded on that particular item.
So we'll vote on item three first. That's on MM 2531.
Don't see a thing.
And councillor Pasternak, how are you voting?
In the affirmative.
Great, thank you.
The item carries, Madam Speaker, the vote is 21 to 2.
Okay, on the remainder of the members' motion, on favor, show of hands, carried. Councillor Carroll.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. On MM 2529, if clerks could put up the amendment I'd like to propose, that is the process to select and open temporary sites for physical distancing and shelters. The motion is simply a procedural.
Hello, Shelley, you tried this the other day, right? I'm here, I'm watching, I'm here.
Okay, councillor Prutza.
Councillor Prutza. I'd like to just finish having the floor.
Councillor Prutza, allow councillor Carroll to move the amendment, and then we can vote on the amendment, so you have the opportunity to vote against it if you would like. Okay, councillor Carroll, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. This is just a procedural cleanup, since the deadlines in the motion aren't meetable by staff, this allows it to quickly go through committee in November and then, and then be at the next council. It's just a procedural path that clerks have recommended and drafted.
Okay.
Speaker, it's not, it's not procedural.
Okay, so councillor, councillor Prutza.
So it's not a quick item, Madam Speaker, but I wonder if you could advance circulating.
Councillor Prutza, we can, we can vote on it, and then we'll vote on your motion.
But she's, but she's misleading the council, and, look, Shelley, when I want your experience on these.
So, Madam Speaker.
Okay, okay, it's not a quick item.
We're not supposed to debate each other, so if you could just advance, circulate it. Thank you.
Okay, it's not a quick item.
Thank you.
Any further?
Thank you so much, Shelley.
Any further?
Thank you for your help, by the way.
Councillor Prutza, please. Okay, so that's it for the quick releases. All those in favor of adopting the order paper, on favor, show of hands, carried. Councillor McKelvey, I understand that you, for one minute, you just want to make an announcement.
Yes, Madam Speaker. I wanted to announce that we have launched the City of Toronto's inaugural Women for Climate program. With the launch, Toronto joins Montreal, Vancouver, and 14 other international cities in this initiative created by C40. Women for Climate will help 12 fantastic mentees in refining and launching their individual related projects through mentorship, networking, and collaborative learning opportunities. The mentees will work with wonderful female mentors who have volunteered to share their insights and years of experience in the field. Women for Climate will build upon the City of Toronto's commitment to fight climate change, as participants are encouraged to align their work with Transform TO and the Resilience Strategy. I want to thank our chief financial officer, Heather Taylor, for suggesting we bring this program to Toronto. Heather was the one that told me about this program on my way to C40 and suggested that we get involved, and through her guidance and enthusiasm, we have been able to bring Women for Climate to the City of Toronto. She's a fantastic champion of this program. Launching this program during a pandemic has been challenging, but I'm excited to see how the mentees' projects will continue to evolve over the next seven months. I would like to thank Daniella Marchesi in my office, and Angie Camara in Heather Taylor's office, for all their hard work bringing this program to Toronto and administering it. I'd like to now take a moment to recognize and welcome the 12 mentees. Anelia Victor, Anne Chen, Anam Khan, Coral Zhang, Erica Reyes Bolanos, Hillary Scanlon, Jane G., Jessica Hui, Christine Lozano, Marie Sophie Ango, Melanie Williams, Rachel Wang. Please join me in congratulating these brilliant women. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor McKelvey, and congratulations. Okay, we'll go to our first item, which is GL 16.5. Deputy Mayor Minnawong, you held the item down.
I did, I have questions.
Okay, questions? This is.
So this is, we're asked to approve.
Okay, just, just one, just one moment, Deputy Mayor. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This is approval of spending $170 million, is that correct? Anyone?
Through the speaker, Deputy Mayor, we're just waiting for Lawrence to be brought into the, into the panelist area.
Please hold my time, then, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to make sure staff are present.
You can move on if you want to the next item, I.
No. Is the staff?
Lawrence is in.
Is the staff in?
Speaker, the, Lawrence is in. He's on mute.
There's a certain level of irony.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I'm here.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, you can ask your question now.
So this is, you're asking for approval to spend $172 million, correct?
Through the speaker, we're actually asking for approval to negotiate. It's not to spend, it's actually to negotiate through, look into contractual agreements for these contracts up to five years, but the ability to spend actually comes through the annual budget process. So it's the ability to renegotiate and spend in terms of with these specific proprietary contracts, so it's not necessarily the whole amount, it's really about the estimate of the potential up to five years.
Is there any duplication in these, in this proprietary software? Like, do we check before we get into these agreements that there isn't any option to use existing or talk to other departments about what software they're using?
Through the speaker, what we're doing is that through the centralization efforts, we're analyzing it each time we go through, that's why we want to negotiate. So I'll give an example. We have software for Salesforce right now, which is our customer relationship management software, and what we do then is that we look through the city to state the various divisions that need case management, there's opportunity to come through an enterprise platform. So the advantage of going through the yearly view to review and negotiate is to allow us to determine that due diligence without going into duplication, as you would refer to.
So I'm just curious, like, I looked at some of these contracts, and they're really, you know, quite interesting. So, for example, there's a contract here with Toronto Public Health for some software with regard to facilities management and, and office space, and I was curious about why they have that software within the context of, I thought that the real estate department in Create TO had a plan, and they were developing those, that plan, and why would Toronto Public Health have a duplicate system?
Through the speaker, I think that it's a great question, the deputy mayor you're posing, and I think this is the opportunity why we've had a central lens and the centralization conversation that council provided a motion last year to come under the chief technology officer within technology services. So these are the sort of questions that in my division, we will be working with each of the divisions to state precisely about how we leverage and utilize. So it's not a guarantee that these particular softwares are going to be signed on, it's to allow us the opportunity through a centralization to ask those questions to ensure that we limit duplication.
So why would we be putting, I mean, it seems to me that we give you, we're giving you power to renegotiate that contract, but it seems that that sort of project is already taking place centrally. I'm not sure, I don't understand why we would be giving you the power to renegotiate a contract like that.
Well, the renegotiation doesn't necessarily lead to the fact that the contract will be actually renewed. We have brought this in a bulk approach, it was done five years ago in terms of this approach, but if we come back on a daily basis, or certainly at a, each of a monthly basis, it doesn't give the technology services area an opportunity to look at it overall within a city standpoint. So what we're asking for here is the authority to be able to walk through, to actually review with the division heads, and if you look at the actual second recommendation, that's what it's stating, that the chief technology officer should walk with each of the division heads to walk through this through. So the authority we're trying to come through from a bylaw is to give us the opportunity to at least sit down and walk through that method in terms of what is best for the interest of the city.
And how long will this process take?
We've started this process already, some of the contracts do come in renewal from September, but the centralization process is starting in 2021 to move through. We would, we were hoping to start earlier, obviously the pandemic has halted that, but through the 2021, we will be taking a stringent look as we look at these. So that's when, you know, I would say that there's a lot of contracts on here, it's a large amount, so I do ask for some support in terms of at least a year to be able to walk with the divisions.
Can I ask Heather Taylor a question, if she's around?
Hi, councillor.
Heather, Senior Services and Long-Term Care, they've got a payroll system. You've got, you have a payroll system too, don't you?
Yes, correct.
Why two?
So through you, Madam Speaker, PPEB, which is the overarching payroll center for the city, manages some payroll areas throughout city and agencies. We are looking currently at centralizing payroll, similar to IT, there are, there are some areas of the city that have unique needs, and it's not necessarily centralized.
Should it be?
Councillor, that was your last question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Speaker. We are looking at centralizing, we do feel that there are some benefits, and to Lawrence's point earlier on, this is something that we are actually focused on for 2021, is looking at for central, looking at centralization opportunities.
Thank you.
I'll speak, please.
Councillor Ainsley. Sorry, Madam Speaker. Lawrence, I understand the auditor general had some concerns around proprietary licenses and how the city deals with them. Can you explain how this process that you've undertaken is dealing with her concerns?
Yeah, through the chair, the process we're undertaking is to review from a combination of aspects. Like, so when certain life, the support, we may not get any support mechanism brought, also when they're end of life. So what we're doing is that we're walking through solutions that are enterprise, I mentioned the sort of Salesforce as an example, and through that process, we're ensuring that we take those propriety aspects that limits the opportunity to, in terms of a competitive process for the city. So it's a one step at a time that we're moving through, and we're trying to move away from necessarily the propriety contracts, there are going to be contracts that are required for proprietary, but what we have to do in the city is look in a bigger centralization and a bigger scale, as opposed to developing solutions that are just primarily and siloed into specific divisions. So it's a method, it's a, it's a method we're working with in terms of looking at the overall centralization, which is really the, the way that we can reduce our dependency from a proprietary standpoint.
Okay, and the example that the deputy mayor used a couple of moments ago about their different payroll systems, so my understanding is, it might not be payroll systems, but one of the things that this does is, it does look across all divisions at IT software that's being used to harmonize it, correct?
Through the speaker, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Lawrence. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Prutza, questions?
My, my question is along the same lines. I've always, so you buy licenses, like, different divisions, different department buy licenses, and they have a certain number of them, but it doesn't, they're not centralized across the system, and, and they're, they're not, historically, they haven't been centralized, you know, to achieve maximum benefit, best, best bang for the buck, as it were. How, how is this going to be any different than, than how you've done some of the other purchases around licenses?
Through the speaker, it's a good question, councillor. I think that I will just start off to state that there wasn't more of a citywide view, and if we look at the customer service, for example, with Josie Scholey, Deputy City Manager Corporate Services, is leading, is that we're first asking about the business processes. Often, the conversation usually starts off, and it's not anything that is just unique to the City of Toronto, about let's just purchase a license. So one of the views we're taking is looking at the overall operating model, for example, if there's an operating model that needs to be centralized for payroll, and then determine what is the right technology solution, which will lead to the actual appropriate licenses and appropriate technology. As I'm stating right now, is that if we go into it on a technology conversation, we will have technology sprawl. What is different this time is that we are stating is that we do not want technology sprawl, which means that we continue purchasing these licenses, but we do need a centralized operating model, and that is the way that you have to approach it, and that's the best practice that's used in the industry, whether it's private or public sector.
Geez, I'm not sure that that really answers my question. That was like really complicated language, Lawrence, you gotta learn to dumb it down a bit, right, especially around technology. Let me ask you, let me, let me ask you the question.
Sure.
Around technology and council, of course, but let me not forget council. So you, you go to the different divisions, you know, urban design, printing, you know, the, the people that do the mapping and graphics and all the rest of it, everybody's got their own niche little license here, there, there, there. City council, our councillor, for years, for example, you guys don't support, we do a lot of graphic stuff, we do communications, we do newsletters and things like that, the programs like Photoshop and Illustrator and whatnot. We can't add ourselves onto those licenses, because you don't, you, you purchase them for, for, for one division, but you don't purchase them across the, across the system. So then the license costs double or triple what, what the bulk prices would be, and we just, we've just been wasting all kinds of money across the system on stuff like that, and nobody's been able to fix it. How does this change that?
Well, through the speaker, we say, what is the Photoshop? I'm going to use the language that you're using. What is the requirements that council, what is the requirements at each of those divisions? They're common requirements that you need. You need to print something, you need to display something, it's common. It's not, it's not different. We state, okay, we require X amount of licenses, 100 licenses to achieve the same functionality. That's what's different. We then look at the requirements that are common. 80% of the requirements generally are the same. The viewpoint that it's unique is really sometimes not really probed, so we say, you need to.
So let me ask the question another way.
Sure.
Can you go out to the, to the market and say this? We may need 200 licenses of this particular product, but we would, so we may go up that high, but we may just actually buy 50. Can you then achieve a bulk price for the 100 or 100 or so, and then actually pay for what you, what you purchase as a component of that, of that bulk purchase? So then, if, if other departments come in and say, you know what, we need an element of that as well, can you add us to that, right? And then you achieve, they're able to, to sort of piggyback on that bulk purchase. That has never been done, and I, and you know what, over the years, I've asked this question, and nobody's ever been able to answer that.
Okay, councillor, councillor, please just ask your question.
That's the question.
Okay, that was your last question.
Through, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, in terms of economies of scale, you can negotiate the contract to buy your bulk licenses and utilize it as you go, which is a pay-as-you-go. So in answer to that, yes, that is possible.
Okay.
And are you doing that? Are you going to do that here?
Okay, thank you.
Just want to remind members, we want to finish by, we want to finish by noon. Deputy Mayor Minnawong to speak. Deputy Mayor?
Well, yeah.
Oh, sorry, councillor Carroll just put her name on. Councillor Carroll.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, I went to do my mute button and bumped my name off the question, and I wanted to question all along. I just want to marry all of the answers to the recommendations for, to make it clear in my own mind. So, Mr. Ida, if you could just take me back, what I see as a recommendation, there are certain that you are ready to proceed, and, and you're, you're giving us the amount. The second recommendation, you're asking for authorization to renew where need be. Is that, is that what I heard you saying to Deputy Mayor Minnawong? Includes consideration in the year 2021? Because some of these can be harmonized. So you'll just be renewing until such time as you can do some centralization, but some are still required in, in new licenses and new contracts now. Is that why we have the two different types of recommendations?
Through the speaker, that is correct.
So those that you can harmonize, you will and will, will hear back from you at that point? Will we get another award item back, say, at the end of 2021 or thereabouts?
Through the speaker, those we, through the speaker, those we can harmonize, we will, we will utilize in terms of coming back to state that we've harmonized these existing contracts. So here's where the information is. And those that we do have to renew based on certain business risk, we will renegotiate to ensure that the city is getting the most value.
Okay, and we'll hear back about that in a, in a future item then? Okay, thank you. Those are my questions then.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong to speak. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong to speak.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I held this item because we've been talking about centralization and getting rid of proprietary software as long as I've been a councillor. And so this is an opportunity.
Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I do. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Do the clerks have it?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Oh, great. The city, the city council requests the Chief Technology Officer and the Chief Procurement Officer to report to the April 2021 General Government and License Committee meeting on accountability policies, procedures, and enforcement that ensures proper business plans are provided for the future purchase of proprietary IT and software systems. As, as I say, Madam Chair, we've been talking about this for a long time, and this problem never seems to go away. Unfortunately, you know, and this isn't necessarily a commentary of Mr. Eta, because he inherited much of this. But in my view, you know, IT is a, is, is a department that, that could be the poster child for waste and inefficiency in our government. We have over, over 1,000 employees. We're going to potentially spend $170 million on non-proprietary software on things like $50,000 for a library of periodicals for the planning department. We've got, as I, as I mentioned, in the, in the Public Health Department, they're reorganizing for space when we've got Create TO doing exactly the same thing. We've got payroll systems that were, that are duplicated. We've got fleet services that have, have fleet services software. And it's not apparent to me that we have, we've talked to either the Toronto Police Services or the TTC in terms of what software they use. I think there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done in this. And so, you know, we talked, I mean, I think the tone of these council meetings are we're spending a lot of money, and we don't know where we're going to get it from. And, you know, there are members of this council that says, that say that there's no money in our city government to find efficiencies and to find cost savings. Here is a report that sets you on a path to identify those places of waste and efficiencies where we can find that money to apply to all the important programs and services that we have in the city that could be spent usefully instead of spending money unnecessarily on proprietary software that we don't necessarily need. So I would like to see that report. I hope Mr. Eta makes this a priority in his work plan. Because $170 million is a lot of money, and I don't believe that it's all being well spent.
Okay, thank you. On the amendment by Deputy Mayor Minin Wong, it's on the screen. I just got, Councillor Cressy, I understand that you want to speak?
Very briefly, Speaker. I, well, thank you, Speaker. I, I just didn't want a, a minute to pass on the item of technology in the city without thanking Mr. Eta and the entire team. I will tell you that in the context of this pandemic, that department, his department, has been amongst the most innovative and effective, I think, throughout this whole pandemic, whether it's providing remote work opportunities, delivering the services that we provide virtually in record time, or working with Toronto Public Health to improve our collective response. And so I didn't want to let this moment pass without commending them and thanking them for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the amendment by Deputy Mayor Minin Wong, it's on the screen. On favor, show of hands. Carried. Item as amended, on favor, carried. Thank you. Our next item is GL 16.8. Councillor McElvee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion.
Okay. This is on 16.8. Proposed land lease?
Yes.
Okay. We'll put it on the screen.
Thank you. I've advanced circulated this already. So it is just asking that we have a public information session on the project, and that there's some additional discussions with the Toronto Library Board, and that there is a transportation impact study as part of site plan. And thank you to city staff that have helped with preparation of that amendment. I am very happy that Scarborough Rouge Park will be home to the Tamil Community Centre. This land was acquired by the city for a community center. And thanks to the Tamil community, we'll finally get one. The community center construction budget is $40 million, and the Tamil community steering committee will be responsible for paying it through funding they get from other levels of government and through fundraising. This area is sorely underserved for, by social services, not just for the Tamil community, but for the community at large. The Tamil Community Center has stated that they will work to incorporate the needs of the broader community. And to guarantee this, they will be signing a community access agreement that will propose that 50% of the programming will be for Indigenous, Black, Caribbean, and other marginalized communities as well. I'm very grateful for the leadership of the Tamil Community Steering Committee in this important initiative. Reflecting on my two years as city councillor in Scarborough, some of my favorite memories are with the Tamil community. From attending community dinners to learning more about their culture through the sounds, colors, and traditional foods at regional events such as Tamil Fest. Of the 300,000 Tamils that now call Canada home, more than 10,000 reside in Scarborough Rouge Park. And through this land lease, we will show them that we support their vision to preserve their rich culture and their language. In my motion, I'm asking that a conversation is also initiated between the Toronto Public Library and the Toronto Community Center organizers to look at how we can partner, since this area is also lacking library services. At a minimum, I'm hopeful we could develop a kiosk where books, books could be ordered and dropped off. This will serve the broader community as well, but it also ties in extremely well with our memorandum of understanding with the city of Jaffna. One of the important pillars of that agreement is libraries. I look forward to continued collaboration with the Tamil community to strengthen Scarborough in the years to come. Wish them all the very best on this important endeavor.
Thank you. On the amendment by, oh, I'm sorry.
Speaker, I do have, I do have a question of the mover, please. Councillor Ly.
Councillor Ly, question of the mover, three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor McElvee. I, I know you've done a lot of hard work in moving this forward. I'm just wondering whether you would entertain a friendly amendment to your, your motion number two about the library to include multipurpose rooms in the library?
Thank you, Councillor Ly. So I think, I know that you've been interested in the sort of relationship that there is between the Chinese Cultural Centre and the Burrows Hall Library. And so like, I'm open to that sort of dialogue taking place in a similar facility at the site, should they be able to come up with a good plan for that in their discussions? So, yeah.
So you, you'll be okay then?
Yeah.
Because I do have some concerns about my residence, which is just a next, you know, to, adjourning to the ward. So they wanted to have some multipurpose room. So I, I hope that if you would entertain that, I would be able to add that on. Thank you.
Yeah, I think a facility like Burrows Hall would work very well.
Yes, 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 similar model, yes.
Should everybody be able to come to an agreement on that?
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ly, so did you want to speak or the question?
I have some question of staff.
Okay, we're not, no, we're speakers now. So, Councillor McElvee, as far as your amendment, did you agree to Councillor Ly? Or Councillor Ly, do you want to move the amendment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so why don't you speak? You're up to speak.
Well, I, I think the clerk has, could, could the clerk please?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Do the amendment, yes. Thank you, thank you. I just, because of, in, in my ward, in like the Chinese Cultural Centre about 30 years ago that they have, the city has leased some land to them. And just to make sure, to ensure that we are being inclusive. So they have, you know, added the Borough Hall's library and community center adjacent to the complex, which I think is very important for, just to ensure that the community at large will be, will have access to, equitable access to community services. So this is just, just to make sure that we are on the right track on that and just to model, the same model like, like about 30 years ago that the city has been doing. I think it's always been the intent of the city to include, to be inclusive and to make sure that the community at large could get access to community services. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor McElvee.
Okay, thank you. So on the amendment, oh, his name, Mayor Tory, did you want to speak?
I did, if I could, Speaker.
Yes.
Okay. Well, Speaker, I just, I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you to Councillor McElvee for her leadership on this. This is something where she's sort of taken it and, and, and run with it. But I, I also wanted to say thanks to the community because she had to have somebody to run with. And if I go back to the beginning of this, so the community came to me a long time ago, before Councillor McElvee was even elected and said they wanted a community center. And I think we all know that there are a number of communities in the city that have, wish. And I've always put the same questions to them that they have to answer as a community, realizing that any community that we want to name, without exception, has many sub-communities, if I can call it, within it. And so I said, the first thing you have to do is get people together, and you have to answer the questions, you know, the, the core questions were, what is it? In other words, what is it you, what kind of community center do you want? Because there are always differences on the kinds of things people want. Where should it be? And how do we propose it's going to get paid for? On the theory that it can't get paid for entirely by government money. There has to be some degree of, of private or community fundraising. And the Tamil community was absolutely remarkable. I mean, within, I, I, I'm not exaggerating, I don't think, when I say six months. A, a community that had different groups within it that sometimes interacted more than others with, with themselves. They got everybody together in a meeting that I well remember, because I attended, to kind of thank them for all getting together. And they had these groups that didn't necessarily work with each other every day, who got together. And they said, we're going to set about with this steering committee that Councillor McElvee referred to, answering those questions. Where should it be? What is it going to be? And how are we going to pay for it? And the fact that we're here today, and that we said we would, in turn, then try to find a piece of land for it, is really testament to the fact that they got together and did what they had to do. And I would say to many of the, we're talking to, and, and, and members of council know there are several who want one of these kinds of centers. I can't always say we can promise the land, nor can any of you. But I will say it's a lot easier for us to deal with these things and to be their advocates to the other governments for funding if they can do what the Tamil community did. I'm not surprised, because it's such a great community of kind of ingenious, determined people, which is to answer those questions and have the answer come back. We say this as one, so say we all. And so I just want to say thank you to them for that, because I think we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the fact they got together as a community or as a series of communities and formed a group that formed one opinion. They gave us that opinion, and now we've been able to move it to this stage, and now we go to the next stage. I don't have any doubt, I never did, that they can raise the money. I think that'll be done quicker than, than we would think. But I just want to say thank you to the community and thank you to the councillor for, you know, kind of working with them so closely on something that was a project that was dear to my heart, because I thought this community, given everything about it, needed to have a place like this and deserved to have a place like this. But they did the hard work to get us to where we are. So thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Yes, so our first amendment is motion two by Councillor Ly. On favor, show of hands. Carried. Amendment by Councillor McElvee. As amended, on favor. Carried. On the item as amended.
Can we get a recorded vote on the item?
Okay, recorded vote on the item.
Thank you.
Speaker, I do have some question of staff. Would that be the right time to ask?
No, we're in the middle of a vote now.
I thought we have a process of question of staff, and then we'll speak to the motion.
Well, that was at, that was at the beginning, before we started the speeches.
Well, this is what I thought. I thought you were, I was just speaking to my motion.
No, no, we're, we're, no, we're, we're doing our vote now.
Okay, thank you.
After members speak and move their motions, then we vote.
Given the opportunity to ask question of staff, ma'am. Madam Speaker?
That was when the item was first introduced, when Councillor McElvee, before Councillor McElvee spoke, when I went to the item, that's the opportunity to put your name to question staff. Before we go to speakers.
Okay, I can, I can deal with, I can deal with that with, on the side then, thank you.
Yes, okay. Sorry about that, councillor.
Councillor Holliday, Councillor Ly, Councillor Pasternak, your votes, please.
I'll have to do it manually. I'm in favor in the affirmative.
Thank you.
The item carries, the item as amended, I should say, carries, Madam Speaker unanimously. Twenty-three in favor.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is PH 17.3, councillor bylaw.
Madam Speaker, I just have an amendment.
Okay, this is taking action to increase support of and supportive housing. Oh, do we have, first of, first of all, are there any questions to staff on the item? No? Okay, councillor bylaw.
Just the amendment on ensuring that as we're producing these units, that our process to allocate them as per our housing plan is also introduced and implemented as soon as possible.
Okay, so the amendment is on the screen for PH 17.
Can I have a moment to read it? It's pretty long.
Okay. Okay, councillor Holliday, you okay?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay. On, on the amendment by councillor bylaw, on favor.
On a point of order, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
May I request some detailed voting on this? I would like to be recorded in support of councillor, Deputy Mayor bylaw's amendments. However, I'd like to vote against the original recommendation, which came from the committee recommendation number one.
Okay, so let's do the amendment first then. On favor. Show of hands. Carried. So on the item, you want a recorded vote, councillor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, recorded vote. Yeah, so we're voting on the item now. As amended, the councillor Holliday wanted a recorded vote on the item.
Councillor Crawford, Councillor McElvee.
The item as amended carries, Madam Speaker. The vote is 22 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is SC 18.1, Golden Mile Secondary Plan. Councillor Thompson, questions to staff?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I did ask for a presentation from staff. It will be about three minutes. I wonder if staff could advance the presentation, please.
Okay, three minutes for the presentation.
Yep.
John Candy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the news really.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, members of council, it's Greg Lindtren. I'm joined by Paul Zuliani from what we call our Great East team to just quickly give a, an overview of the Golden Mile Secondary Plan, a plan that's been in development with the community councilors for just over three years, a plan that will bring, I think, residents of around forty-three thousand people, rivaling the size of the Scarborough Centre, around twelve thousand jobs, or sorry, twenty thousand jobs over the life of the plan. So I'll turn it over to Paul to just give you a quick overview of the secondary plan that's contained in the report.
Madam Speaker, I'm advised that Mr. Zuliani is having trouble connecting.
Okay, Mr. Lindtren, can you continue the presentation or do you want us to go to the next item and then come back?
I can, I can continue the presentation on Mr. Zuliani's behalf.
Okay, if you can go ahead.
I'll do my best. Certainly, the, our team in the east are the subject matter experts in detail, but just, just for members of council, just to orient you, this, this plan is over a hundred acres and hectares in size and it follows along the new Eglington Crosstown that's under construction, serviced by five stations, just east, continuing east from Victoria Park. The next slide, please. So the development in the plan is guided by certain vision and principal statements, which importantly, set out the notions and concepts around complete and livable communities that we make sure that we build this area out in a very connected way with new streets, with new public spaces, with new public parks. We, we respond to, of course, local conditions in the area, build opportunities for prosperity and, and integrate planning that creates a resilient community that, that actually emerges over time as a resilient place to live, work and play and learn. Next slide, please. I think you skipped one. As we do with secondary plans across the city, it's a large area, we break it down so that people can relate to the geography of the area. We've oriented the area based on certain character defined by land use on the ground, built form and public realm objectives, creating really safe, enjoyable, well-designed spaces for people to be together, to create a community, and again, with a, with quite a focus on the transit investment that's under construction across Eglington Avenue. Next, next slide, please. So the public realm in the area presents an opportunity to build on and enhance existing streets and parks, build new pedestrian cycling connections. Interestingly, we have the Meadowway just to the north of the area, which is an amazing amenity that's emerging across the whole breadth of Scarborough. Public realm policies really are something to, that we use to shape communities across the city, and this is no different, making sure that they're well-designed, creative places for people to design new and imaginative spaces. Next slide, please. Next, the street network, of course, when you're dealing with large sites, we break up blocks as the area changes, introduce new streets through development. We, we want to support mobility that, that includes all modes, bringing people to and from the site, sites. I think really important to emphasize here that this allows people to make connections, to create porosity across what are now very large, difficult sites to maneuver. It is really important to lay down this type of network so that people have all the options to move around in a safe, comfortable and, and people-centered manner. Next slide, please. A lot of emphasis on built form and design excellence. We want to create a place where people want to come and invest. We want to create a place where people ultimately love it as a place to live and enjoy it and feel that they are proud to make this their community. We do that through excellence in design and built form. And there is a lot of emphasis in, in our, in our draft policies for, for this to be achieved. Next slide, please. Of course, the rubber always hits the road around density and we've imagined through the plan and expressed in this, in this concept plan, the way the density is arranged and arrayed across the site, married, of course, with our public realm and built form objectives so that density, which is substantial, I indicated forty-three thousand people and twenty thousand jobs, this area will significantly be reimagined and transformed over the life of the plan, but importantly, done in a way that expresses a variety of built forms, a variety of building types, unit types, you know, making you feel like you're in a city within a city at the end of the day. Next slide, please. We can't grow just population, we have to grow infrastructure, that means the pipes, that means community services, parks, community centers. And of course, when you've got forty-three thousand people coming to an area over time, you've got to phase in development in a responsible manner and support it with a full, complete array of community services and facilities and achieve these services in a way that is married up to the way that development will unfold over, over the next many years. Next slide, please. So at the end of the day, the next chapter, really, we, as I said, we're coming off of three years of development and consultation on the plan. I want to emphasize that when, as, as this plan builds out, there is a great opportunity here to achieve affordable homes, which is certainly currently through our large site policy. But along with that, schools, childcare centers, places to live, work and play and learn, really, you know, when you think about the, the history of the Golden Mile, this is really a bright future and we feel a positive future for this community as, as we continue to support its growth. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Questions, Counselor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Lindtren, for the great presentation. I just wanted to ask some questions around the public engagement process and participation. How engaged and how involved was that process?
Through the speaker, the, the engagement was significant, as I indicated, over three and a half years of, of engagement. I can recall attending one of the last in-person sessions at Victoria Park and Eglington at the hub there. I would say that it's one of the more engaged, you know, processes that we've had because, as you know, people don't live in the Golden Mile right on Eglington today, they live all around it. And it's been important on, to the north, south, east and west of the Golden Mile to engage the communities who I think very much feel that this is their future, this place is their future, a place that they can begin to call their main street and, and the place that they will, they will, you know, live, live with for a long time, but also new people who would hope to reside and work here. So I think that engagement has been very robust and complete.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Lindtren, for the answer. We looked at the twenty or so public realm policies that were actually in place and it's, it's been refined. I'm just wondering if you can help me to understand, there was concerns that Bell Canada had with respect to their telecommunications facilities just north of Egerton at Pharmacy. I'm wondering, with respect to the public streets and that was designed to go through their property, whether or not conversation is actually taking place with them in order to alleviate any concerns that they may have about the fact that it may cause disruption because of all of the infrastructure that they actually have in place there. Is that discussion ongoing with them to refine that process?
Yes, I believe that, that conversation is ongoing. I think, as is the case with all major utility and, and other infrastructure agencies and, and partners in the area, that's a vitally important part of making, making the plan work in the long term.
Thank you. And then can you help me, please, with respect to the realignment of O'Connor Drive? Can you tell me what the process will be? Will there be an opportunity for the landowners as we move forward to, to, to be engaged? Or have we already determined a specific alignment?
The, the street that are, streets that are shown in the plan are conceptual, it's certainly a guiding principle to, to introduce new streets as we normally do. But the EA that is recommended in the report is the next step. And very importantly, that will be the opportunity for us to get into more detail and refine these alignments and work with landowners to actually land them on the ground and secure them ultimately through development.
So I know I'm running out of time, but we talked a little bit about the process of engagement in terms of the public. Can you help me to understand, with respect to community benefits, there had been some, a table that's been established with United Way, Wood Green and others and so on. Can you speak a little bit to that with respect to the opportunity to create jobs and the impact that those jobs are being created will have on the local community so that local community will in fact be participating as part of that process?
Yes, through the speaker, it's a great question. There has been a really, a different kind of conversation going on in the Golden Mile that has been sponsored by the United Way, engaging the private sector, agencies, other interested parties around what I call, you know, above and below the line public benefits. So certain public benefits that could be secured through development, for example, such as affordable housing, affordable commercial space, community hubs, things like that, connections. But below the line, other opportunities, you know, using the second and third floor of commercial buildings for low-rent commercial space, such that a, you know, U of T could go in there and other, and other agencies could go in those spaces. So having this process underway guided by the United Way has been a real innovation, I would say, because it's happened early and before the plan is, has been adopted and will help to continue to inform all of the opportunities that we can, that we can achieve through the development process going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Carroll, questions?
Thank you, just a couple, Madam Speaker, and I apologize upfront to, to both our chief planner and the local councilor, if this is in the plan report, it's just so expansive. I know that we're just looking at the secondary plan, but I'm wondering, in, in future development applications, is it in the secondary plan that we need to articulate that, that displacement has to, to meet to the fullest and possible our city policies around rental replacement and how we deal with displaced tenants, which, which is primarily towards the west of this, where, where that might happen with, with future applications?
Through the speaker, so the secondary plan does not set aside citywide policy, so it works with citywide policy. So for example, our rental replacement policies, if development does affect existing units, our citywide rental replacement policy would apply, continue to apply. There are very few directly related rental, rental units. This is a change area that is undergoing regeneration, so there, there, there likely will be very few of those types of situations, no real displacement.
Right, okay, but we don't need to articulate it in this document. So then I just have one other question. When this began, the ambition around this, and there are some applicants, I understand, already queued up, when this began, it was under the old planning regime, pre-Bill 108 even. And so I'm wondering if staff have had a chance to look at what the change to, to the community benefit in the new provincial government's regime might actually mean? If we're, we have a secondary plan and now as we go through the applications, we're probably only going to get about a third of the, the section thirty-seven and development charge types of suites of things. Are we still going to be able to meet the infrastructure needs of this area under the, the province's new rules?
Through the speaker, so, you know, not unlike other areas of the city, we're, we're still in the process of reviewing about nine applications that are affected or in play, I'll say, in the area, some of which have been appealed. Generally speaking, I will say, generally speaking, applications that are filed are evaluated based on the legislative regime that is in place on the day that they are filed. So these will be generally reviewed in the context of plans that existed. However, what's important here is that this plan, the Golden Mile Secondary Plan, is and will be council's view of, and guide us as we, as we evaluate these applications. And the pre-existing policy framework was not sufficient to, to help us evaluate these applications. So it's very important that we are able to, you know, to use the, the, the direction of this plan to resolve any differences that we have with any applications and to continue to process those applications in a way that achieves the objectives of the plan as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Philian?
Similar questions to Counselor Carroll's. Having reviewed the effect of the new rules for fees by developers in Willardale and seeing that based on an analysis of several sites, we would be receiving approximately twenty-five percent of the amounts we were receiving previously. I think there is a huge potential problem for plans like this where you're, you know, you kind of highlighted the community services and the childcare centers and the, you know, complete city within a city. But my view, and I know you're still studying this, but based on what I've seen so far, there will be no chance of achieving that with the current amounts that developers are required.
Can we make sure, can we make sure we ask questions on the item that's before us?
I am asking.
Okay, if I can have Greg Lindtren respond to Counsel Philian?
Through the speaker, so generally speaking, the study, the Golden Mile study and the secondary plan has equipped us with the necessary information to know what kind of infrastructure we need for this kind of complete community. So that's kind of our starting point is, how many schools, how many daycares, how many parks, et cetera, et cetera. As you know, Counsel Philian and other members of council, we've expressed the position that through the transition to the CBC, we want to maintain revenue neutrality. In other words, we want to be where we were before the new CBC. In other words, we want to be where we were before the new CBC, which we have two years to bring into effect. We want to be where we were on an infrastructure revenue perspective, from that perspective. So for example, we will continue to work very hard to make sure that we use existing tools, even if they transition somehow, to achieve the kind of infrastructure that we need to build the complete community. That will be our going in position. And that's why the plan is important to have because it tells us, you know, what we need on that shopping list and guides us in the negotiations, both specifically with applications, but also more generally as we transition from a former Section 37 world to a new CBC world.
So thank you for that answer. I'm just trying to make sure I'm interpreting it properly so that even after 2022, when the new CBC is in place, if we are unable through that to achieve the type of community that you planned for, that could be a reason to refuse an application. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Either refuse or put on hold because, again, goes back to the importance of having a plan and knowing what kind of infrastructure we need to support a complete community. Everything that we can do to support that proposition and ultimately a case if it came under appeal is helpful for us as we create that new environment under the CBC. We'll have to take steps, especially in our growth areas, to make sure that we either can rely on the old world system to achieve the infrastructure we need or transition into the new world legislation, again, in a way that delivers on the infrastructure that we need to build these complete communities.
Thank you, and I really think that speaks to the need to develop comprehensive plans like this, so thank you.
Counselor. Thank you, sorry. Thanks, Mr. Lindgren. Very exciting project. Could you please elaborate on the affordable housing plans here that you have incorporated in the secondary?
So through the speaker, the secondary plan relies on our existing framework in the official plan, that is the large site policy. Many of the sites in the area are subject to the large site policy, which is in force, and we'll be pursuing implementation of affordable housing at a base level, at least, through that policy, which allows for, as you know, three ways of achieving affordable housing, either through the conveyance of land, through units that are owned by the developer, and through straight conveyance of units. It allows for those three options, and typically over the past period of time, we've been relying on that. I'll say that in the future, as we transition to, and this is an official plan document only, it is not a zoning bylaw, as we transition and hopefully gain the permission to utilize inclusionary zoning. Over time, this area along Eglington Avenue is considered to be a strong market. And in that context, as you know, we're working through PHC to bring forward inclusionary zoning policies, and we would see, we would see ultimately utilizing inclusionary zoning in this area. And we believe the potential in the area is in the order of 2,000 to 4,000 affordable housing units.
Out of 42,000 units?
That's correct. That's our, that's our view today. I think you're dealing with development over a long, long period of time, and aspirationally, I would hope that that will always increase.
Sorry, just on the units was 42,000 units over.
No, sorry, it's 43,000 population.
Oh, okay.
24,000 units.
Oh, 24,000 units. So you're looking at the inclusionary zoning hitting about a 10% number.
That's a ballpark, yes. Again, we're dealing at an OP level right now, and we would hope that ultimately as we, not all the sites are large sites, but as, you know, so the opportunities will be initially restricted to large sites. But as you know, we often can look for opportunities to add in city incentives in some of the projects that serves to create more affordable housing or deepen the subsidy on some of the units to achieve a broader range of affordable rents.
Right. And I know this is an OPA, but still having some aspirations for social things outside of simply community facilities, I think, is helpful, such as understanding that there'll be affordable housing on this site. Is that not something you might typically acknowledge in a report of this time?
It is, the affordable housing approach is acknowledged in the report, and certainly all of the dimensions of building a complete community are acknowledged in the plan and the report.
I don't think it was in your slide deck, that's what I.
I believe we had it in red, red on one of the slides. Actually, very deliberately put it in red because I think it's an important point to make sure that we're underlining.
Thank you.
Actually.
Thank you.
For that.
Counselor Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, Madam Speaker. The work that you've done with the secondary plan, I would assume, will be a large part of the work that needed to be done for the MTSA studies, correct?
Yes, through the speaker, that's correct. It's foundational for the MTSA studies, and I would say makes us MTSA ready.
That's exactly my point. So what, is, are all these stations Phase 1 of our MTSA schedule?
They are a strong market area. They have transit under construction. I would say they are strong candidates for Phase 1. I just don't have that map in front of me, but I would say it's likely.
Okay, I would really like to know because with so much work.
The answer is yes. I just received the answer.
I wanted to confirm because then I would move a motion because you've done so much work. They should be ready, and that's a prerequisite to have the inclusionary zoning done. So I think these are really strong candidates to be some of the first sites that we are actually ready, would be ready to introduce this because so much work has been done through the secondary.
Yes, definitively, they are part of Phase 1. Just received that information.
Okay, thank.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank my colleagues for the questions that they've asked. First of all, want to, I don't have any motions. I think we've exhausted the motions that I've needed to move through the process of community council and so on. I want to thank certainly Mr. Lindgren and his presentation, his leadership. I've had to bend his ears on numerous occasions on this file. But I want to thank the team in the east, as Mr. Lindgren has referred to, led by Paul Ziliani and his expert guidance, and also heavy lifting by Emily Caldwell, and she has just absolutely been terrific, Shroy Pei, and all the other amazing members of the Scarborough Planning Team. I want to thank them very much for the hard work that they've done. Madam Speaker, this is a storied area in my community and that also of Counselor Crawford, and I'm hoping that he will speak shortly. It's the Golden Mile. It has been our core, our downtown. It has been also an area that has been influential in Canada's development and the world's development. This is the area where munition and ammunition were produced for the Second World War, where the famous bomb of girls, we are basically came to life. We have tunnels, we've got a vast array of exciting things that are here. But the Golden Mile has, you know, not seen, quite frankly, the growth. It has been described as the golden mile of industry at that period where we had on the south side GM manufacturing plant and so on. And as Mr. Lindgren has pointed out, there's not a lot of people living there. It's not animated. It is, we've got the big boxes and so on. But this is a great opportunity now for the GMSB really to come alive, and it's not going to happen overnight, we get that. The infrastructure that's actually in place right now is such that it is not a complete community, but we are now, you know, preparing and planning for a complete community. And I'm really happy about that. Many of the members of the community are excited about that. They've been very much engaged. They have seen, obviously, their ideas considered. And Ms. Caldwell, in terms of leading many of the consultation process, where a vast array of people actually came out to show their interests, their concerns, and so on. And I'm thankful to the community for their engagement, their involvement in this particular process. This is exciting for us. It's an important opportunity for us. My very first job as a 13-year-old kid in Scarborough was at the intersection of Pharmacy and Eglington at Burger King. That was my very first job. We're going to see that that entire area will transform. It may not be in my lifetime, but the fact of the matter is that this process led by this council is leading this opportunity. And I will tell you, Speaker, the main ingredient with respect to this transformation is transit. It's the expansion of transit and the issues around affordable housing, the issue around, Counselor Fletcher asked about, I think Counselor Carroll talked about displacement and so on and so forth, those are all baked in. Affordable housing, those are the discussions that we've talked about. Community benefits, engaging in the community to ensure that they have a stay, to be able to work, live, and play in their community. This is extremely exciting for us, the number of parks that are going to be in this area, nine new parks. The fact of the matter is that we've been having discussions with landowners, and I'm excited to tell members of council, we have been able to negotiate some amazing numbers so far for Section 37, including obviously the parkland component part. While I can't reveal those numbers yet, I will tell you it is not reflective of what would potentially happen as it relates to Bill 197. I can tell you that it's very much in keeping with the current situations that are in place. And as Mr. Lindgren has indicated, you know, the changes do not come into effect for another two years. And I was very concerned about that in terms of the changes coming in effect and recognizing that this development in this, you know, 100 and over 100 hectares is not going to happen overnight as to whether or not we would actually, you know, be impacted so negatively. Mr. Lindgren talks about the inclusionary zoning and the things, the tools that they have now in responding to having a complete plan in terms of ensuring that a community is not deprived of future benefits that should accrue to them to help them with respect to the hubs, facilities that.
10 seconds.
Okay, so it's 12 in my book, but it's okay, Speaker, and all the benefits. So I'm really excited about this. So again, I want to thank staff and thank everybody involved. And again, thank Ms. Caldwell for the heavy lifting and the consultants that were hired to help us, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have to hold the item down.
Why?
Because we have a timed item. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have your timed item that was scheduled for 11 o'clock, MM 2532. The motion has been circulated. We can put it on the screen? Mr. Mayor, did you want to speak? Okay, Counselor Holliday, do you have a question to the mayor?
No, to staff, Madam Speaker.
Okay, question to staff, Counselor Holliday.
Thank you. Do we know where the sites are?
Through the speaker, it's Julie Carboni. I think Abby is trying to connect, but I know that they've been working very closely.
Through, sorry, Julie, and it's Pat Matos. Through Madam Speaker to Deputy Mayor Holliday. We're still working through the process on site identification. Part of our process will be to reach out to the market through the broker community and to conduct the public solicitation. Our goal is to develop a robust pipeline of sites. We do have a working list, but currently we can't disclose it as it'll impact our ability to effectively translate, sorry, to transact. I mean, the whole, our whole process is with the intent of ensuring that we have a fulsome assessment of available and potential sites so that we have a large funnel that we can assess for, that will meet the program criteria.
So in four weeks, we will have the final list. I got that right from the report?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that is correct. We have, the Housing Secretary, it has a deadline of November 27th to submit her program requirements, which would include the list of sites.
And this, this report delegates that to the, to the, to the city staff management?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that is correct.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Torrey, would you like, excuse me, would you like to speak? Or do we have any speakers? Counselor Cole to speak?
No, I had a question of staff.
Okay, you put your name under request to speak. All right. Question to staff, Counselor Cole.
Yeah, the question is, how much time do we have to deliver a response to the province? I want to ask.
Through the speaker, it's Julie Carboni. We have.
To the federal government, excuse me, yeah.
Oh, yes. We have until November 27th to submit our plan, and then we have 12 months from when the agreement is signed to deliver the unit.
So we have to respond by the end of November?
We have to have our plan into the federal government by November 27th.
Wow, okay, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Lindgren on the same item. You know, given what the timeline is here, it's unprecedented that we have to do this all within one year, and it's fantastic that we have this opportunity to provide for affordable housing and housing, supportive housing. The question I have, you know, given, you know, what the province is now doing on a regular basis, that is the ministerial zoning orders, like we've just saw on the West Donlands, where they choose their priorities for housing, it's usually market condominiums. Can we not, as a city, develop our own internal version of a council or planning director's zoning order, which basically dovetails and complies with our priorities as a city in providing, you know, affordable supportive housing? Can we not develop our own streamlined way of making approvals expedited so that we don't lose time and.
Counselor Cole, can you ask questions on what we have before us?
Yes, that's what I asked. I asked Mr. Lindgren, can we not expedite our approval process? That's what we have before us.
Through the speaker, the answer is yes, we can, and yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday? You are, okay, Counselor Holliday, you're up to speak?
Yep, there's no further questions. I'll be very brief.
Okay, Counselor Holliday to speak?
Yep, only that I commend the federal government for coming forward for funding for these type of housing initiatives. It's the right order of government to do this. I know we've talked about it already in this council meeting. I just very much regret the timing that they have imposed on the city, you know, to have a list between now and a month from now of all the locations, and then to have them built in a year. I think it's really hard to be a good service manager and meet that. I think it's really hard to be a good service manager and meet that timeline. And I don't know, to me, it's like going to the store and buying a pack of hockey cards. You don't know what's inside the pack until you've already bought it. And maybe there's some really good projects here, and maybe there's some that I'd be concerned with. Anyways, I, I don't particularly like surprises, and I don't think that the public does either, and I regret that we're in this position.
Thank you. Counselor Ly to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I, as an advocate for affordable housing, I think it's very, very good that, good news about this funding that the government is giving. And I'm very, very happy that Counselor Cole asked that question about whether we can streamline our approval process, because, you know, a lot of times, we, we need to change a little bit of how we do things, and, you know, especially in terms of affordable housing. And I am very happy that in the report, that it says that about 8,000 units of rental affordable program. And it's very, very exciting now to get that kind of, in times of the COVID and about affordable housing. And I just wanted to ensure that staff would keep the local councillor informed, as the recommendation said, that they will work closely with the, with the local councillor on community engagement and those kind of things. And I really appreciate it, and all very good, good news. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, so last speaker, Mayor Torrey.
I had, I had my name to speak, Madam Chair. I was down to speak.
No, you, you had your name down to ask a question. Did you want to speak now?
No, both, I said, to speak and to ask a question.
Okay, Counselor Cole, go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Yes, I think this is a very pleasant surprise. I mean, instead of sort of being negative about this incredible gift of $200 million to provide affordable, supportive housing, we should be very, very appreciative of this and work with it and not sort of now whine and say, well, we can't do it this fast and we don't want this kind of thing happening. You know, I think we have an urgency here. I mean, there's a incredible urgency to provide housing of all forms in the city of Toronto, and therefore, we shouldn't sort of go hide in a corner and complain about this. Let us be aggressive, let us be prudent, and let us work with our planning staff and with all the potential partners we have here to do something with this $200 million for, you know, it's the mayor's number one priority is housing. And we've had this very important allocation of money to the city after all these years of complaining that there's no money being put on the table. So now we have the money, so let's not complain about the money. Let's start building. We've got some of the best engineers, contractors, carpenters, you know, we've got incredible people, entrepreneurs in this city that could build anything. What we have in the way is our processes, which are there for good reason, but I'm glad to hear that the general manager of planning has said that they have a way of putting in an expedited process so that we don't bury, you know, the process to get affordable, supportive housing for people that are, you know, we've got a waiting list of how many, 120,000 people?
Okay, thank you.
So how can we not accept this, given we've got 120,000 people waiting for affordable housing in Toronto? Let's roll up our sleeves as a council and get this done and stop whining about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I as well, just a moment to say I support it. I have a number of affordable housing applications in my ward that's being delayed, and we need to expedite these applications. So hopefully, the planning staff will work to, to process these applications that have been delayed. Thank you. We'll hold the item down for the mayor to speak later. Now we'll go back to the Scarborough item. Counselor Crawford to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just on what Counselor Thompson said, even though it was a few minutes ago, I too want to thank the entire planning team out in the east. Paul Zulliani, of course, who led it, along with Emily Caldwell, the entire team. We out in Scarborough through community council and myself over the last two years as the city council of that area have worked incredibly hard with that team out there under a lot of different circumstances, especially over the last number of months with the, with the pandemic. But with, you know, with the entire community, the public engagement that has taken place and recognizing the size of this is massive, you know, you've got the 43,000 people moving into that area, you know, 20,000 jobs. And I know a number of my colleagues have gone through these secondary plans, and we've seen those plans come to fruition over the amount, a number of years. This is a huge opportunity for Scarborough. And when you think about the Golden Mile, as Michael had mentioned, if you live in Scarborough or have lived in Scarborough or close by, you have a memory of the Golden Mile, whether you were younger, whether you were older, whether you go to the Edelton Town Centre when you were early as, as a senior to the food court, or you were aware or maybe have been around when the McQueen actually opened up the Golden Mile, I think over 50 years ago. We all have memories. We have all been there, and we have seen it change over the last number of years. And I think this is, you know, the ultimate change for the Golden Mile, and I think for Scarborough as we move forward. So I'm very much supportive of everything that we have been doing on this. And it's a good opportunity for the city. It's a good opportunity for Scarborough, which in many ways, this would be looked at as one of the gateways into Scarborough, and it's going to be overall good. Now, I do have to be remiss if I didn't sort of bring up a few comments or comments I've heard from a number of landowners. As I said, this is a great report, but it's now where the real work begins to ensure that we can have this vision come, you know, come to fruition, whether it's five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. But I've also had a conversation with many of the landowners on the south side of Edelton, which takes up my part of the ward, and they are concerned, you know, with their viability, with the sustainability. A lot has to do with what's happened over the last number of months. But there are concerns, there are questions that they have, and I know our staff have been working. In fact, we deferred this report coming to council for a number of months so our staff could actually go out and have those individual conversations with landlords, and I want to thank them for that. They did an incredible amount of work. But again, as we're looking at sort of reconciling the vision of what we're trying to achieve, we also have to look at, you know, the next process. And there will be appeals that'll be coming. We'll be looking at the appeals to the municipal comprehensive review. And I think it would be remiss for us as, as a city, and I think as our staff, to really look carefully and look seriously at a number of these appeals reviews that are going to be coming forward, to ensure that we can look at understanding the challenges that a number of the landowners are facing. And try, and I think, as I said, when I've talked to these landowners, they want this vision to, to succeed. They absolutely want this to succeed. But I think in the realities that we have been facing over the last number of months, we need, and recognizing that this secondary plan has been in the works with over three years. A lot has changed in those three years, and I think as we move forward to ensure that we have success in this secondary plan, that we have to really look carefully at that as we look at all the other processes. But, and again, on that, I'm, again, very supportive of this. I think this will be not only great for Scarborough, but it'll be great for the city. Thank you.
Okay, members, we need to finish before lunch. Counselor Fletcher.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I also agree this is a pretty exciting development. It, it is a really long-term development, and you might, I'm very, very familiar with, with this site. When I first came to Toronto, I went to Ashtonby Campus, which is very near there. I was with, performing at the closing of the van plant, the van plant, everyone knows the Scarborough GM van plant, which fortunately closed and so many jaws were lost. And this is part of a long morphing of this area. Many times been to Metro, the Bay and Fabric Land. It's very near and dear to me. My kids and my mother-in-law, we've spent much time in this area. I did ask about affordable housing. I think it was in Mr. Lindgren, in red in his report, but it wasn't commented on. So I think this is a big opportunity, and I would be very interested to see what the large sites are and what the goals are for affordable housing along, along this site. So just want to say, I think one of the reasons why this will be very successful is that the L R T is going through there. Counselor Thompson, I just, Deputy Mayor, I just want to thank you for not trying to turn this into an underground L R T, simply because this is now going to be the most vibrant part of the street. It will be such as Queen East and Queen West, which are the development nodes which are being sought after by developers, in particular because they have a streetcar. You can have such great ad-grade animation and housing. So these are the nodes that are being developed. The Danforth, for all of the subways that it has and subway stops, is not having the same type of development. And even in our mid-rise guidelines, I think that they were very much built for, to increase the density. And what's turned out is that density is increased first and foremost on those lines where people are on the street for this form of housing. So I think the faster the L R T can get there, the faster this great project can be realized. And I know that, Mayor, I'm sure it'll be built before you're gone from this earth. I hope that it'll be built before we're both gone from this earth. But nonetheless, this is a very good stamp for everyone to revitalize this section of, of this important area, this gateway, because it does lead the east end of Toronto and meet Scarborough. It is a very important intersection, Victoria Park and Eglington. And I just want to say good work to everybody. I know there's more things to do. There's community benefits agreements that have to be negotiated. There's affordable housing that has to be negotiated. We'll all have our eyes on that because this is a big site and have many important city building goals that will be built in to the work in the future for Egerton.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll.
Well, just briefly, Madam Speaker, I wasn't going to say this on air, but I think I am. I really especially want to thank Counselor Thompson and his team and his residents because the staff have already been thanked profusely, but the experience along Shepherd Avenue, Counselor Philemon will probably agree with me, and if our friend Counselor Shiner was here, he would certainly agree, to take your residents through the, a transit-generated secondary plan and to totally reimagine and to, to get to the point of accepting, big density does have to happen to make this transit viable, and so let's plan it and let's plan our future and, and accept that you are going to see 40,000-plus new residents here, it's very difficult. It is perhaps the most difficult piece of engagement there is, but this is going to be welcome news, and I'm going to feature in my next communication to, to my community. Because along Shepherd Avenue, the residents often say, okay, you're telling us that we have to accept all this growth because of our subway, and we don't see it happening everywhere else where new transit is coming. And here we are with the, the Golden Mile. We're going to all call it, as Counselor Thompson does, the G M S P from now on. Here we are, looking at the G M S P and seeing that, yes, this is what new transit brings, but you get the transit, and if you all work together, you get really good planning. And, and, and that's the piece the local councillor has to add to staff's efforts. And so I want to congratulate him because this seems to have happened relatively smoothly over the last few years. It's hard to accept this, but the residents, at the end of the day, seem ready for the, the, the process of going through the applications and having this come to fruition. And so kudos to Counselor Thompson and his team and to his residents for coming to the table. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the item, do we want a recorded vote?
Yes, please.
Recorded vote.
Please. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, the item carries unanimously. The vote is 22 in favor.
Thank you. Our next item is MM 25.9, Counselor Layton. This is the skateboarding pad.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I believe we have, there is a motion that's coming from Counselor Bylaw that's been prepared that addresses some of the concerns.
Okay. Yes, you've already.
Nice pumpkin, pass the candle.
You spoke at the, at the other day, yeah. So we've already asked questions to staff on this item, am I correct? Yes, and we've already had Counselor Layton to speak. So now we're going to speakers. If we can put our names up for speakers. Counselor Bylaw.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to place the peace in the valley motion so everybody is happy, I think, with this. We can get the skateboard park for the area, and we have a source of funding.
Okay, do we have any questions on the amendment on the screen? No? Okay. Are there any further speakers?
Hold on. Hold on a second.
Deputy Mayor Minawang, do you want to speak?
Can I, I'm just trying to read through this motion, but maybe Counselor Bylaw, if I could just ask her a question. Is the funding, does the funding stay secured through the general manager?
The funding is through the use of available Section 37 and 42 contributions, Counselor. That's what the motion says.
Okay, I didn't have a chance to read through it, so as long as it says that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, it does, it does. That's why I said I, this is peace in the valley. We have the source of funding, and we have the skateboard.
Okay.
Thank you.
So any further speakers? No? Okay, so on the amendment by Counselor Bylaw for MM 25.9, on favor? Show of hands, carried? Oh, that was the item, yeah. Thank you. So our next item is MM 2515. Counselor Perks, you held the item down. This is empowering Toronto with the city charter.
Yes, Speaker, I have a question to staff.
Okay, questions to staff.
To the city solicitor, does the federal government have unilateral authority to create charters which give additional jurisdictions to municipalities?
No, through you, Madam Speaker, it does not. The Constitution divides powers into two categories, federal and provincial, and the four areas of jurisdiction listed in the motion are in fact within the provincial realm. However, if this was to be done through an amendment to the Constitution, federal government's buy-in would be required through approval at the Senate and House of Commons.
Right, and.
That would provincial buy-in, though.
It would require the provincial government.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Matlow, questions? Counselor Matlow?
I was on mute, excuse me. Was, to the solicitor, was your answer to Counselor Perk's question in response to what the status quo is? So in other words, according to the Constitution right now, the federal government doesn't have unilateral decision-making power, right?
The current Constitution does divide powers into two categories. That's correct. So delegation to a municipality can only be currently done in those, in those areas by the provincial government.
So a mechanism that the federal government can provide is a single, a single province amendment if the province and the federal government both agree to, to a charter?
Through you, Madam Speaker, constitutional amendment to grant authority to municipalities or a municipality within one province would require the approval of the Senate, the House of Commons, and the provincial legislature. There would be some. additional authority through buy-in from other provinces. But, but yes, there is, there is a strong possibility that this more simplified constitutional amendment process could apply to this sort of thing, yes. Even if the provinces require.
If I can reiterate it in perhaps plainer English, just for everyone who may not be as versed as you are with the Constitution, is it true that what you're referring to is that there is a possibility, if not a probability, that if, if the federal government and a single province are in concurrence on a matter like providing a city charter, that that, that single province amendment has been used before on other matters and could very well be used in this case?
There is, yes, that is, through you, Madam Speaker, that is correct. There is a bilateral amending formula and a general amending formula, and the councillor is speaking to the bilateral amending formula, which does not require approval of other provinces.
And just to be clear, with respect to the verity of the motion, this mechanism is, is a, is a federal mechanism, given that it's constitutional, but it would need, as far as we know, provincial buy-in at this point.
Madam Speaker, I'll be unequivocal, it would require provincial buy-in. The provincial government would have to approve this.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Perks, you held the item down, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Speaker. Like councillor Matlow and frankly, most Torontonians, I am enormously fed up, tired, exhausted, and angry at the way the province of Ontario has treated the city of Toronto, both in terms of our local democracy, but also in the ways that they have neglected areas that are of joint responsibility. I'm thinking here, public health, or childcare, or homes for the aged, or any of a housing, any of a dozen other things. And like councillor Matlow and many others in the city of Toronto, I want to be able to do something about it. But to tell people in the city of Toronto by voting yes to councillor Matlow's motion, that somehow asking the federal government to do something about this broken relationship accomplishes anything, is misleading at best. It would still require the province of Ontario to pass a piece of legislation identical to what we're asking the federal government here to do in order to achieve any effect. In other words, the provincial government would still hold all the cards. So we accomplish nothing by voting for councillor Matlow's motion if our goal is to somehow get around the problems we've been having with the province of Ontario. You heard that from the city solicitor. I, as a matter of practice and principle, never bring something to this council which tells the public we're accomplishing something when in fact we're not. That's my first objection. My second objection is actually the deeper, more important one. Councillor Matlow has laid out in his motion four areas that he wants the charter to give the city of Toronto authority over. Where did they come from? Whose ideas are these? Was there a wide discussion among Torontonians? An answer, of course, is no. If we want to have a conversation about changing roles and responsibilities and authorities between the different orders of government, you can't do it by a motion brought as a member's motion and then voted on by 26 people. That's not how you come to a consensus on a new way of delivering government services and a new set of relationships between governments. If we want to have a conversation on changing those, we should have a broader conversation with everybody. We should invite in people who weren't consulted in devising the lift that councillor Matlow has done here. At the beginning of this council meeting, we all agreed that if we're going to have a conversation with the federal and provincial governments changing how funding works and how financing works as a result of the pandemic, then we need to have it come back to council, first in December, and then quarterly from there on, so that there can be an opportunity for the public to be involved. Councillor Matlow's approach, short circuits, all of that. So both because we would be telling people that we're accomplishing something when we're not, and also because if we're going to change who does what, we really need to have the people who depend on these services and who elect us be part of the conversation about who does what. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Matlow?
Oh, Madam Speaker, I'll speak to councillor Perks' comments first, and then I'll get into the substance of the motion. I think councillor Perks has misinterpreted the motion at best. There is, as the city solicitor concurred, a provision in the Constitution referred to as a single province amendment. It's been used before, I hope that it can be used again. And we also know that we have a provincial government currently that isn't interested in a conversation about empowering Toronto or any other Ontario cities. So the way that the motion is worded is really puts the focus towards the federal government to take the lead on this initiative. And hopefully, our provincial government will follow suit, or perhaps another one, after the next provincial election that will be more favorable to Toronto's interests. The mechanism is the single province amendment. A lot of people don't understand it. Sometimes they misinterpret it, or sometimes they get into rhetoric around what can or cannot happen. But there is a mechanism that the federal government can take the lead on, but nowhere in this motion does it suggest that, that the provincial government wouldn't have to buy in. It's simply saying, provide the mechanism. The mechanism we know exists, although the city solicitor did say that there is some controversy over whether or not it can happen, but many, many constitutional experts suggest it can. So, so the, the reason that A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D are there are for this reason. One, we've learned through the pandemic that when we, based on the advice of our local public health experts, deem that we have a local public health priority, sometimes it takes a week or more to convince the provincial government to take actions that we've decided are in the best interest of our local residents. B, municipal elections and governance, I don't need to tell you. In 2018, that was an example of when the provincial government ignored the city's position. And then more recently, whether or not you like ranked ballots, the fact that they just unilaterally decided to remove that option was wrong. C, financial matters. Our mayor has said that he has been frustrated time and time again when he's gone to the provincial government, including the Wind Government, to ask for road holes on the DVP and Garter. I'm not asking you to agree or disagree with that concept, that suggestion, but we should debate it locally and we should be able to make decisions about our finances locally. D, land use planning and construction matters. Bill 108, OPA 405, ministerial zoning orders, I could go through the list, where the province ignores the city's plan, the city decisions based on our expert planners and communities. Why are these four there? Because they are pressing concerns that I believe that there's concurrence amongst councillors and members of our community about. They also are the most common items in city charters prevailing in American cities throughout the United States, whether it be Los Angeles, New York, Chicago, and I could go through hundreds and hundreds of others. What we're asking for, and by the way, almost all of you, I believe, have voted for similar motions like this in the past. The reason I bring it again now, it's really reiterating what we've already agreed to as a council, is that we can't keep being non-existent when it comes to governance in this country. Cities don't exist constitutionally. We are creatures of the province. Moreover, I believe that this federal government in particular has been a champion of, of cities and urban areas since it was elected. Over 80% of us in Canada live in cities and other urban areas. This is going to a more friendly level of government to say, please provide that mechanism, that single province amendment, work with us, take the lead, try to rally the provinces towards this, not just for Toronto, but for Vancouver, Montreal, Calgary, Edmonton, and so many more. That's what we're asking for. And I, to be very candid, I have a lot of respect for councillor Perks. I know that he's very, he looks at every word. I think that he's being a little too, he's reading, he's reading what he saw in it, but not really what it's, what it writes. And I ask you to support this so we can send a message that we want to be able to make decisions locally for local priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Phillion?
Yes, thank you. Councillor Perks is correct that nothing is going to happen anytime soon with this. He is wrong that there is nothing gained by adopting this motion. In the short term, it draws attention to the abuse, really, that the city of Toronto has had from this provincial government, whether you're talking about the old Doug, you know, chopping the number of councillors in the middle of an election, or the new Doug, you know, taking, you know, arbitrary action regarding ranked ballots, or the extreme cases we've had with ministerial orders, with planning issues. You know, it is really completely unacceptable, and we need to at least be alerting residents to the extent to which that is taking place like never has before. And in the long term, you know, provincial governments change, and there is, you know, it is, it is certainly very possible that you could get an alignment of a federal government and a provincial government and the citizens of Toronto who would support this kind of change, and it could actually happen. And there will, of course, be lots of opportunity for the type of public engagement that councillor Perks is talking about. I think all of that is already happening somewhat spontaneously. So I hope we will adopt the motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't say this very often, but I'm supporting councillor Perks.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion, recorded vote.
Speaker, I'm locked out and I'm voting against the motion. I'm locked out of the system.
Okay, thank you. We'll report that, councillor Thompson.
Reporting in the negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, the motion loses, doesn't carry, the vote is 10 to 12.
Our next item is MM 2529. councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If clerks could put up the motion that I advanced circulated, because I don't have the copy of it now to read, here it is. If you're looking at the original motion, you'll probably understand the change I'm making. I'm simply changing the direction of the report that's being requested. City Council direct city manager to report through the Economic and Community Development Committee to city, and on to city council meeting on the process that was used to establish the shelter at 30 North Finch Drive. So councillors, there really is no attempt to mislead, as was said this morning. The motion that is before us asks for a report from staff directly to council, and councillors simply don't do that. If you're reporting, if you're asking for a report request, it goes through a standing committee and on to council. And the reason is this, if there are concerns in the community about this process, on its standing committee visit, the residents who are concerned have an opportunity to come and speak to us. And that's a really important piece. But more importantly, when I saw this motion, I thought, oh, that's skipping a step, I just got to check the procedure. What the clerk led me to understand is that this, this report request in the November council has already missed the deadline. The report couldn't be created and brought there in time in any case. This allows it not only to have an airing for the public, but it allows staff to resolve issues that may have, have already been brought to the fore last month and will be brought to the fore in committee. It gives them the ability to resolve the issues that councillor Perutz has and propose them in time for when it actually does come to council. That's actually the, the path that our procedural bylaws recommend, that clerks recommend, and I think because there are some issues around North Finch, the public would recommend, because if, if they're upset, they're going to want to speak to it, and they're going to want their councillor to have an opportunity to remedy the situation. And that remedying really needs a first airing in a standing committee. That's my reason for moving this, and that's why I call it a procedural motion. It's just changing the procedure by which we'll get the report, the very report that the councillor moving the motion would like to have. Those are my comments, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor, are there any questions to the mover? Okay, councillor Perutz, did you want to speak?
Yes, Speaker.
Okay, councillor Perutz.
Yeah, again, I'd just like to thank councillor Carroll for her help. It's not my intention to create a brouhaha. As you know, I raised this a month ago. You know, this, this site was opened in the ward in May. I found out about it in September through a constituents' call. I just want to know the process that was followed, pure and simple. I don't, I don't want to, you know, create a series of hearings on it. I don't want to, you know, create a brouhaha. I think I'm entitled to the information. The staff has had well over a month to sort of think about what they would put in a one-page or two-page, you know, memo to, to city council outlining the, the process that was followed. I will, I'm hoping that people will just simply support my motion. It's just simply a request to ask for information, not to create a process, not to create a debate, not to create a brouhaha, not to create a diversion. And, and again, I.
But you can't do it that way.
Yes, I can, councillor Carroll. It's been done so many times.
Councillor Carroll, please, please stop interrupting.
You know, you know what, you've always been very, very helpful to me, and, and I've noted that the fact that you've always been very, very helpful to me on, on just about everything I've ever tried to do at council, I, I expect that in the future you will continue to be helpful to me, very much in the same way. I suspect that there will be continued in my regard. Look, I don't want to delabor this. I'm hoping that people will vote down councillor Carroll's motion, will support my request for the information, and we can move on. It's pure and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Thompson, did you want to speak or ask a question?
Yes, yes, Speaker, councillor Thompson would like to speak. I don't need to ask a question.
Okay, councillor Thompson.
I would just like, thank you very much, Speaker. As the Chair of the Community Economic and Community Council, I think it's really important for people to understand what's actually happening here. I want to encourage you to support councillor Carroll. I've had the opportunity to speak to our staff, and I want to support our staff as well. There is ample opportunity for councillor Perutz to get the desired information that he requires and he needs, and I think it's a requirement for members of council. I am told by staff that they have repeatedly, repeatedly attempted to speak with councillor Perutz, and to provide him with the needed information and so on, and he and his staff have not made themselves available in order And he and his staff have not made themselves available in order to meet with our staff. These are senior staff members who are reaching out to the council in order to address the issues and concerns that he has. We don't need to make this a fight on the floor of council. We have the opportunity, we have the mechanism in place to allow us to deal with these issues. There's no doubt that the staff have had a difficult time in terms of responding to providing shelter for people during a pandemic, and it's been very difficult. And I understand the councillor's frustration and so on. We've seen how councillor Grimes has handled the situation with respect to his area. We've seen how former councillor Jimmy Carrigan has handled the matter in his area. We've seen other councillors handle this particular matter. I think it could have been handled differently, and I'm asking members of council to support Counselor Carroll's motion today. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay. So we have the amendment. The amendment for Counselor Carroll.
Recorded vote, Speaker, please.
Yes. Recorded vote.
Counselor Pasternak, please.
Madam Speaker, the amendment carries. The vote is 14 to 8.
Okay, item as amended. On favor?
Recorded.
Recorded.
Members, if you'd just stand by, we're just putting the vote on the screen in a moment. Members, the vote panel is now being opened. Thank you for your patience.
Counselor McKelvey, please. Counselor Fletcher.
Okay, I can do a screen vote.
Madam Speaker, the item as amended carries 20 to 2.
Okay, so Counselor Bylaw, understand the member, the mayor's motion that was introduced earlier, that we held the item down because the mayor wanted to speak on it. So I've been told now that you will speak on his behalf.
Madam Speaker, I wouldn't say that. I think I would, I would speak. I would bear to speak on the mayor's behalf at council.
But you'll speak on, you're going to be speaking on the motion, correct?
I'm joking. Yes, I'll speak on the item.
Okay, Counselor Bylaw, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, municipalities from coast, coast to coast have been calling on the federal government and their provincial governments for assistance to deal with homelessness. We all know that this was a crisis that existed pre-COVID, but during a pandemic and during a time where we're over and over again asking people to stay home, when we have thousands of people across this country and in our city, about 10,000, that every night don't have a place to call home, I think it is imperative on all of us to do everything we can to make sure that we correct this and that we produce the housing that is needed in our cities. We have called on the federal government, the mayor, with the FCM, this big city mayor's caucus, provincial municipal leaders across the country called on the federal government for a rapid rehousing program. We ourselves have presented a rapid rehousing program for 24 months where we called for 3,000 units, for 2,000 units of supportive housing and 1,000 housing allowances to help us to deal with this issue. So what we have in front of us is actually a very good start, that as Counselor Cole said, it is very, very welcoming and very, very much needed. I think it is on us to do everything we can to deploy these units as soon as possible. We know that we can do it. We've proven that we can do it. We have two modular housing projects on the ground with residents taking occupancy at the end of the year. But we also have hundreds of units, thousands of units, of units in motels and hotels that we're renting, when we know that actually what we need is permanent supportive and affordable housing. So why not, while responding to this pandemic, make sure that we respond in the more dignified way and respond with the solutions that are actually even more economically and more fiscally responsible? And I think that's what this plan would allow us to, to do. I emphasize, however, that there's a big piece missing in here. We have the capital dollars from the federal government, $203 million directed to the city of Toronto, and I'm sure that we're going to be working with our nonprofit partners to apply for even more projects for the other 500 million that are on the project sites. But we need the province as well as part of this conversation. We know that a lot of these issues need, and a lot of these homes need supportive services. Yes, we need the capital infrastructure. Yes, we need the buildings. Yes, we need the land that the city has been also made available. But it is imperative that we have the supportive services available as well. So I, I call the attention for the members of council as well that not only are we going to accept the money, deploy the money appropriately, and ensure that we have this, these facilities and, and the homes for the people in Toronto, but that we are also calling on the provincial government to be part of the solution. We know that housing and homelessness is something that can only be tackled when we have three orders of government and private, and private and nonprofit partners at the table. We have had in this agenda projects like the UHN, where we're bringing other partners to the table to produce these supportive housing units. So I emphasized and I call as well on our provincial governments to join us on something that could be meaningful so that, and I say this again, I've said it before, at the end of the pandemic, we're not only left with invoices for hotel rooms that we needed to use in order to keep people safe and housed, but we can actually have keys to people's homes because we all know that is actually the solution with dignity, and it's actually the one that is fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Okay, we were going to the last speaker. The mayor was the last speaker. Counselor Cole. No, did he have his name on? He already spoke. Mayor Tory, last speaker.
Well, Speaker, thank you very much. And I'm just going to pick up on a couple of the themes that Deputy Mayor Bylaw was speaking about a moment ago, but I want to begin by thanking her for her particular leadership on all of these housing files. But this one is one, you know, that I think is going to prove to be a real watershed moment for us in the context of the relationship between ourselves and the federal government, the speed at which we will both move, them and us, the speed at which we will actually have people housed, and I'll come back to that because it's really a large part of what she was talking about just a moment ago. And I think it's a great example of the kind of cooperation. And, you know, note should be taken, and I apologize, I wasn't present for most of the debate because Counselor Layton, please take note, I was meeting with a federal minister in my office here, asking for other money for other things. But it is one of those things where I also, beyond thanking Deputy Mayor Bylaw, I want to thank the Government of Canada. You know, we went to them early on, and I was just telling Minister McKenna, who I was meeting with here in my office, of the fact that we went to them quite, quite a ways back, and Counselor Cressy was involved in this too. And we had put together for ourselves a business case that said, aside from the moral case we all got and everybody bought into of saying, there's a better way to do this than incessantly increasing shelter space and taking on more and more rooms, which just happened to be available now. I mean, if we were in peak tourist time and the economy was normal, we wouldn't have had the latitude to do that. So we knew we had to find a different answer. And we supplied them with the business case we did for ourselves, the business case, aside from the moral case, that said, it actually is going to cost us less money to do all of this and to shelter and house people, especially the supportive housing piece, than it is right now, the way we're doing this with the hotels and various other things. And the federal government, to give them their due, had, had, had put their toes in the water on this a little bit with things like our modular housing pilot project, but hadn't really stepped forward full bore. And now they have stepped up on what I've called a good start because you don't want to say it's the end because it isn't, it's the beginning, with a significant sum of money, of which Toronto is a very significant beneficiary. And that should be noted as well, that we're getting, you know, and look, that's commensurate with the size of the problem we have in our city, which is, you know, huge by, by any national standard in this country at all. And I'm not proud to say that, but it's just the reality of being the biggest city in the country with a lot of these complex problems, and where, in fact, and this is a subject for another day, we serve the needs of the entire region when it comes to housing, people who are in need of supportive or shelter for themselves. So in any event, they've stepped forward. And so this motion, and I realize if you, when I sort of first was handing it last night, I, on the one hand, was, was, again, what's the word I'm looking for, incredibly grateful and admiring of our staff for being able to put it together quickly. On the other hand, I knew that it might cause a degree of indigestion with people because these are sort of technical provisions that are being made, but for one reason only, so that we can make absolutely, positively sure, we do everything we can as a city to move as quickly as anybody could to make sure we don't lose a penny of the $203 million that has been made available to us as part of the first installment of this program. And so I want to thank the federal government, and that starts with the Prime Minister, who I talked to about this. It goes through the Housing Minister, who Deputy Mayor Bylaw and myself had many conversations with, the Finance Minister and Deputy Prime Minister, Christopher Freeland. They stepped forward, as did the MPs for Toronto, and really made sure that they delivered a program for the whole country, but one that also took account of some of our particular needs. And I think we helped them a lot by making sure we showed them that there was a business case for this, that actually is going to make us better off financially for having made these investments. And then there's the other side of it that Deputy Mayor Bylaw made reference to, which is this actually then provides a, pardon me, much more permanent answer for some of the people, especially those in need of supportive housing. And I want to pick up on one more thing that, that she said. And I was on the phone at length last night, at the end of the day after our council meeting adjourned with, well, it wasn't yet, it was the day our council meeting was held, with Minister Michael Tobolo from the provincial government. And I raised with him, take note of that in your diary, Counselor Layton, I raised with him the fact that we had this wonderful modular housing thing going on in downtown West and in Scarborough, great pilot project financed in part by us and by the federal government for the capital side, and we still didn't know, when we're weeks away from people moving in, whether the province would, as they must do, support the operating cost of that, because that's the supportive part of this, which I would argue is part of a healthcare system. And so the one flaw in this at the moment is we just don't have, is we're prepared to step up now using these 203 million and the, and the two modular projects using the previous money from the feds, we don't know, you know, what's going to happen vis-à-vis the funding that goes with that to support people. There are some of those most in need in our city. And so we're going to keep working on that. I was working on it with Mr. Tobolo. He was unaware of that, believe it or not, as a minister, and so we're going to work on all that. But it's just something that I think is going to be really important. But I think this is a very important moment. I thank the members of council for cooperating and allowing a little bit of sort of that latitude and trust to allow the public servants to get on with this. I've been very much involved as, as the deputy mayor in seeing all the different properties that are possible for this, but there's a lot of work to be done putting together that investment plan. But this now gives them the latitude to do that and to make sure we just don't miss out on a penny of this, and that we achieve the objective, which is to actually have people in housing that have been purchased or made available because of this program in a very short period of time. Well, we're talking months here, not years, and that's a real departure for all of us. And I thank our staff, city staff, again, for great work done on this. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. So on the motion, let's have a recorded vote.
Counselor Perks, do you see the vote on your screen?
I'm very sorry. No, I seem to have been dicing.
All right. How do you vote, sir? In the affirmative?
I'm voting the affirmative.
Thank you. The motion, or the item carries, I should say, 22 to 1.
Yeah. Okay, there's the vote. Okay, thank you. Members, before I ask for motion to enact the general bills, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments? Moved by Counselor Perks. If we can put it on the screen. Counselor Perks? Yes?
I'm in favor. I'm still having trouble with my.
It's not on the screen yet.
That's why.
Okay, it's on the screen now, Counselor Perks.
I move that the committee and council considered submissions in the making of, in making a decision on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments.
On favor, show of hands, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the general bills?
Moved by Grimes.
Moved by Counselor Grimes. Okay, Counselor Grimes, if you can read it. Okay, there it is, Counselor Grimes.
I believe you're ready to introduce bills 862 and 896 and 899 to 913.
Okay, all those in favor, carried. Shall these bills be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, carried. May I have a motion to excuse absentees?
Moved by Counsel Ainsley.
By Counselor Ainsley. Okay, Counselor Ainsley, it's on the screen.
The City Council excuse the absence of Counselor Jay Robinson from the October 27th, 28th, and 30th, 2020 City Council meeting.
Okay, all those in favor, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the confirming bill?
So moved, Speaker.
By Counselor Cressy. By councillor Creasy. Okay, we'll put it on the screen.
That leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of city council meeting 25 on October 27th, 28th, and 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Shall leave be granted to introduce this bill? On favor, carried. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, show of hands, carried. Thank you, members of council. Thank you very much to staff. Happy Halloween to everyone.
Bravo, Madam Speaker.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Everyone stay safe and well.